Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for March 28th, 2022. Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call. Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Fiverr.
I move to excuse Councilmember Smith from tonight's workshop.
A vote cast. That passes six to zero. For the record, Lisa Smith actually joined us for our five o'clock session via Zoom upstairs. She is in Poland, working on the relief efforts as it pertains to Ukraine, and we're so very proud of her. And she looked, which is eight hours later there, so it was two o'clock in the morning, and Lisa looked absolutely exhausted. And so we told her, why don't you take the rest of the evening off? And she was very adamant that she will be watching the video of this when she returns. She is going to find, as I did while I was in Israel and Egypt, that you can't get onto arvada.org because our security system is so excellent. So I didn't get to watch all the city council meetings until I got back. Mr. Jones, you did an excellent job, actually much better than I do, which kind of upset me some. But we thank you all for your excellent work in my absence. It's good to be back in the saddle. Mr. Devon, we've got three workshops tonight?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to start with the Old Town Update, and I'll ask Ryan Stachowski to lead this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me. I'm Ryan Stachowski. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development. This is largely a celebratory overview of what's been going on in Old Town. But I recall that on May 8th, 2021, with resounding support, the city council really wanted to move forward with the transition from a temporary Old Town street closure to what we were calling semi-permanent. So I'm going to run through that fairly quickly. But then, at the end, I'm going to talk a little bit more about what's next. And I think that that's important, not just for the council to hear, but also for the community here. Next slide, please. We skipped one. All right, there we go. So as we all know, and as we all recall, we closed the streets in Old Town as a temporary response to COVID. We needed to learn a new phrase, social distancing, and we wanted to support our businesses in Old Town. And so while we thought what was going to be temporary got extended, and quite frankly, is still ongoing, we went through several iterations until finally, on March 8th of last year, we decided to say, well, this is working for us, and it's working for our community. We want to move forward in the semi-permanent function. And so that's when you gave us direction. Next slide, please. So in key considerations, because we were doing this so quickly, we did some community outreach, but we couldn't go into the length and breadth of all the different stakeholders that we wanted to in order to implement this as quickly as we did. Some of the things that we knew we needed to get right was talking to our first responders, our police department, and our fire departments to make sure whatever we were planning was appropriate. But there are other things that we didn't have time to look at, like the underground infrastructure and some of the other improvements that we'd like to have, but needed to take a little bit more time to look at. So that is something that we are going to be doing in this next step that I'll talk about later. But in that next step, we are really going to focus on additional community input, updated design and layout consideration. So is this configuration the correct configuration? Why or why not? Those types of things. What types of significant infrastructure changes would we like to see in Old Town? What's appropriate not? If we're going to invest the money, we want to make sure we're investing it for the long term. What's been invested now is reversible, if you will. Obviously, public safety from all of our different aspects is important, and then creating that real strategic vision for the next 20 years. Next slide, please. So remember this. These are just some things to ground us. Remember, we're looking like it was great to have temporary closures, but they didn't look great. Next slide, please. Again, these were the temporary measures. It was active. People were out there. People were enjoying it, but it could look better. So next slide, please. We came up with a plan, and City Council, I remember when we were talking on March 8th, there was like, can this be done in April? Can this be done in May? We really want this, and we want this as quickly as possible. And we always want to please council and go in the direction that they do. But it does take a certain amount of planning. So we were able to come up with these iterative plans in a relatively short period of time. You can go to the next slide, please. And we were able to use these plans in order to talk to our stakeholders, the bid, the community around us, our first responders, to make sure that we were both protecting the pedestrians inside the pedestrian area, but also allowing for emergency access. And these are just illustrative ideas that show that we were thinking about both access points from an emergency standpoint, but also protection from a pedestrian standpoint. Next slide. So these are some that are illustrative of the semi-permanent nature. If we were really going to build curbs in this location, we would have removed the asphalt underneath. We would have done some more subgrade work. And what's really built underneath those, even though the medians are significant, so they can hold the weight of a fire truck, which is roughly 80,000 pounds, fun fact that I learned, is that we just put an inch of gravel that separates the concrete from the asphalt. So if need be, we can go and scrape that off and resurface that asphalt and not make a significant change and not get our roadway back. So this is an illustrative example of how those were constructed. Next slide, please. This is proof that the fire truck can go over them, and my son is in that fire truck. Next slide, please. The parklets. So one of the other things that we were working on is creating more uniformity amongst the outdoor dining spaces. We were allowing a lot of spaces that were on the sidewalks that was frankly taking away from our ADA access, and that's something that's incredibly important to us. So one of the things is by unifying the parklets, by allowing the people that wanted the parklets to utilize them in the way that they needed to, we created a unified look and feel. We were able to take our sidewalks back and really kind of tie in the historic district that we were going for. And that's been largely successful. I will say that the next iteration of that is working with the businesses on a parklet agreement. And that agreement has just been shared with the bid board. We're getting their feedback. And once we get that feedback, we will start sharing it with the business community. And the intent there is really twofold. Number one, it's to make sure that the businesses are utilizing and maintaining the parklets in a way so that we can maintain that consistency. Also, it is noteworthy that the businesses that are receiving these parklets are getting additional space that is available for them for commerce and whatnot. And so there is a conversation amongst Old Town businesses of some businesses got parklets, some didn't. All were offered, but some businesses wanted the parklets and some didn't. By charging a lease to the parklet users, we're able to then reinvest that money and support all the businesses in Old Town. And that was part of the primary direction that City Council gave on March 8th, is making sure that you don't just focus inside the closure area, that these need to extend, and we need to support all of Old Town. Next slide, please. Beautiful murals that were painted on the street. This is just something out of the box, and I'm just so proud that we did it, and they look awesome, and pretty neat addition. Next slide, please. Another neat addition, just creativity and thinking outside of the box, these are the flexi posts that help create a visual barrier. But instead of just having the white flexi posts there, we were able to wrap them in vinyl and make them a little bit more creative. Next slide, please. So, and you all recall this, because I believe almost every one of you were there on October 15th. Seven months after the original direction, we were able to cut the ribbon, the largest ribbon in Old Town history, 2,000 feet, I believe, was cut on that. And I was really proud of the team's effort in order to implement this from vision to implementation in that period of time. And that's during COVID, with supply shortages and challenging employment, getting enough people to work and all those things. So that was a really great milestone for us. So that's where we ended up in October. But now we want to talk about what's next. Are we being successful? How do we know? Next slide, please. So, starting in April, we are going to be having a quarterly display that's going to be on arvada.org, that is going to be a digital format. And this is just illustrative. There's actually five or six different things that we're measuring. We're measuring overall sales. We're measuring utilization of parking in the hub. We're measuring utilization of parking in Old Town, pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, car traffic, and scooter traffic. And so this will be updated quarterly. So we'll be able to see the trends, and we'll be able to backdate those trends over the past three years to see how we're doing. And so not only will this be informative to the council, but as we move forward and say, do we want to move from semi-permanent to permanent, what are the things working for us, and what are the things that are not working for us? Next slide, please. So our next step is using some of the same funding, the ARPA funding that we used in order to make those investments. We're also investing in planning. And so we've hired Dig Studios, who is going to work with us on a large community engagement process to really understand what the next 20 to 30 years of Old Town is, that both includes a strategic vision, but also prioritizes investment and costs that would later come before City Council to say, those are things that we want to support moving forward from a financial aspect, or those are things that we're not going to do right now. So we believe that this timeline is going to take about 12 months, and we are ready to kick this off in the month of April. So just the next couple of weeks here. And with that, you can go to the next slide, and that's the end of my presentation.
Ms. Mormon, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I so appreciate all that's been done in Old Town and the changes there. And I also appreciate the changes for ADA access we've seen with the parkettes, because I know before then, it was quite a challenge to get around in a wheelchair. So I really appreciate that. But carrying on that theme, I think when you're looking into the future and doing the planning, I hope that ADA continues to be part of those evaluations and those conversations. And one of the things that I hear a lot from constituents is that they're not coming to Old Town anymore because they can't drive up and get out of their car and go into the restaurant they used to go eat at. And that's a mobility concern on their part. And so I would love for us to be thinking outside the box on that, trying to find solutions. I know we used to have a shuttle that would take people from the parking garage to, you know, where they want to go in Old Town. I know there's golf carts, there's pedicabs, and there's a lot of different things that we could be thinking about that I would love to have, make sure that's part of the conversation as we move forward.
That's great advice. I've definitely received those comments as well. It is going to absolutely be part of that strategic reinvestment conversation. We want to look at everything, and access for all members of our community is absolutely part of that discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. I actually echo Councilmember Mormon's concerns with ADA, and I know that's something we're going to continue to look at, and I appreciate that highly. And then mine was actually just sort of an aesthetic. Looking at the photos, one of the things that I see, you know, the umbrellas, there's a lot of neutrals, maybe a few blues in here. One thing I would love to just have us consider perhaps is, as we go to reinvest in some of these, allowing, within consistency to each other, some aesthetic uniqueness. For instance, colorful umbrellas in front of Lady Nomata, because that fits with their theme, maybe yellow ones in front of Schoolhouse, because it fits in front of their theme. I think that we could have a consistency while also allowing some visual distinction for the different businesses. That could be a lot of fun and even more visually attractive for Old Town. But overall, I'm extremely pleased with how everything's going and what we've been doing. Like the wrapping of the vinyl, my daughter loves those crayon ones. So whoever came up with that, just brilliant.
Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I think at our, one of our updates might have been the one last year, we talked about lights, overhead lights, that that's such a, oh, such a keystone element to like Laramore Square and places like that. Have we, and I know there's challenges with it, but can you tell us just a little bit about that, if there's any possibility of that in the future, and what the challenges might be?
Because Mrs. Jones wants to know. He's asking for a fridge.
Yes, I'm happy to talk about that. So I know way too much about this specific topic, because I've delved into it a little bit. But some of the challenges with the lights are meeting fire height requirements. So they need to be at least 13 feet, 6 inches above the drivelanes. That's one thing. Number two is that we don't have consistent facades on both sides for lights to be strung across. So the way that you really need to do it is you need to put poles at the end of each block. Well, recently, because of the health of some of our trees in Old Town, some of those planter boxes had their trees removed. It is possible that those planter boxes could be repositioned into large poles that go up and then allow for guide wires to span across, and then you can do the lights across. But the other thing that you need to be thinking about that is you need a considerable foundation in order to do that. And I'm not technically savvy enough to tell you how deep that is, but I know it's more than a couple of feet. And so to be able to dig that up, now you're talking about underground utilities and infrastructure and those types of things. You're also then talking about how are you replacing the pavers that are around it? And once you start poking up the pavers, then you're talking about electrical systems, and you're talking about irrigation. So while you say, I want to string lights, it is a domino that has a long checkbook behind it, that you don't want to just pull that string and then keep pulling, because it's not as simple as lights. Although I think that everybody would agree that if we get lights in Old Town, it'll be a home run, and we'll love it. So it's definitely a goal, but it's something that we're evaluating as part of the strategic reinvestment plan. Because when you're doing phases, and when you're doing different parts of these things, you want to make sure you're thinking of everything so you're not doing one thing, and then you're like, I have to undo that in order to come back for it.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for the explanation, and just try to keep it in there for somewhere down the road.
I think it's part of my job description, so.
Thank you. Ms. Fiverr.
You do know a lot. It's amazing. Or other lighting, I mean, some sort of accent lighting, if that's too much of a checkbook to write. The one thing also I recall in our conversations is activating the alleys. Is that part of the scope?
It is part of, it's absolutely part of the scope. And not to get into the weeds too much on this, but one of the challenges is when you close the streets, the alleys become that much more important for dumpsters and for deliveries and other things. So it's not as simple as activating both the front and the back of the buildings. You need to understand the business models. And quite frankly, every business has a little bit different need. And so herding those cats is also a challenge, but it is absolutely part of the scope of work.
I mean, as we close this up, I think the alleys need to be maintained at a higher quality. If they're not activated, they at least need to be clean and painted and maybe lit, just because of movement of people trying to get to the pedestrian areas.
All fair points. And one of the things we're working on now is try to consolidate the dumpsters. But that in itself is a challenge.
Yeah, and maybe the activating of alleys are not for everywhere. There's might be some alleys that make sense and others that don't.
Correct.
It would be nice to activate some of those back alleys, because is it the Dairy Square in?
Dairy Block.
Dairy Block in Denver. If you haven't been there, that's an amazing activation of an alley. Oh, yeah, Pablo does too. So it would be interesting what we could do there to maximize our commerce ability in Old Town by maximizing that space as well.
Absolutely. Mr. Jones.
Well, first of all, I just want to say that on the whole lighting thing, all I heard was blah, 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 blah. We would all agree that lighting in Old Town would be great. So.
That's all I meant to say. You got it.
That's what I, that's all I heard. Just a quick question on the parklets. So I know that there's, I can think of one restaurant that maybe it appears that they didn't choose a parklet, but they definitely have sidewalk space for outdoor seating that they used, obviously during COVID. What's the positioning behind that? And if they were to come back and say, hey, well, we want to do that outdoor seating again, but we don't want the parklet? How are we thinking about that?
So sidewalk seating is done, because it's technically right-of-way, it's done by a revocable permit to City Council. And so if somebody wants to come forth and ask for a revocable permit, we would allow that. But we're also balancing ADA and those opportunities by whether they have a parklet. So there have been some new businesses that have come in and say, hey, I have a parklet, but I want sidewalk space as well. And we've been resistant to saying yes to the additional sidewalk space because of ADA concerns, when they already have the parklet. But not everybody is in that same position. So if we can find a way to work with them that they can't get a parklet for whatever reason, and that a sidewalk spot is available to them, then they can come forth and ask City Council if it's appropriate use of the sidewalk in that area.
Which I think is great. The other question I have with regard to that was, how do we ensure that the material that they're using for that enclosed area is consistent with the look and feel of the other areas?
So it's all subject to the design guidelines in Old Town, and so those are already set forth as part of what we look for in review, and they need to follow those guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. I actually forgot to ask about something a minute ago. The Old Town tree, that was one of our greatest losses this past year in the windstorm. And so I was wondering if we could provide an update for the public on that.
Sure. In the one-time funds, which are coming to council soon, I don't have the exact date, maybe one of my colleagues does, there is some additional funding in there in order to put a significant tree there. It's a Christmas tree. It's a Douglas fir. It's a blue spruce. I don't have all the details, and I can't even remember how tall it is. I think it's 30 foot tall. But we wanted to put something significant there in order to kind of fill that hole that happened to us on December 16th, I think. But we also want to be mindful of not spending too much money, because we're reimagining the square and understanding all of those things as well as part of this reinvestment plan.
Thank you.
Ms. Mormon.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't ask about recycling.
It is part of the overall study, and it is also something that we've been pushing the bid on as well. Again, I don't want to get in the weeds on all these operational things, but with the parklets and with the closure, the collection of trash is a little bit of a different animal, if you will, for us. And so we needed to rethink that, and that's an ongoing discussion. And when we're thinking about how we're going to redo trash in Old Town, adding recycling is a natural extension of that conversation. We just haven't settled on a solution yet.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is a good discussion, and it's very exciting, but I'm going to be a bit of a wet blanket. Until we fully recognize and address the issues that Scott Spears brought before City Council here either last week or the week before, we could build an incredible, wonderful, permanent, open, credible, pedestrian-friendly space that if people are not willing to come because they don't feel safe, it's a total waste. So let's not lose sight that we have to address the public safety issues as we deal with this. So, and I know our police department is fully aware and is doing everything they can. In fact, we had some discussions at breakfast this morning with Mr. Fifer, Mr. Devon, and myself, that until we get the court system and everyone else to recognize that, you know, we have to address criminal activity that goes on in an appropriate fashion so that it doesn't just keep repeating itself and doesn't just get certain individuals thumbing their nose at authorities, we've got to, we've got to address that at the same time we're doing all this work. So.
Absolutely.
Yep. Mr. Devon, anything else?
No.
Very good. We'll move on then to, speaking of our great police department, let's talk a little bit about body warm cameras.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm pleased to introduce Commander Betsy Westbrook, who will lead this presentation off.
Thank you. I'd also like to introduce our Administrative Sergeant Chris McCoy, who is taking time away from his brand-new baby to be here tonight.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations.
And then our civilian operations manager, Candace Harris. Thank you guys all for your time on this. I know that this is a huge project. We've been working very hard on this. And I know it came to all of you March 7th for the contract. So we wanted to kind of give you some details as to, you know, what the actual project entails, what we've been doing, and where we are on it to this date. So as you know, this came out of an unfunded mandate from all Colorado law enforcement agencies, that we are all required to have body warm camera programs by July of 2023. We will be implementing ours, hopefully, July 2022, so this year. We are on track, but there are some possible delays just with equipment because of backlog. So from the time of signing the contract, they estimated six weeks, but we don't know if that's going to actually happen, or if there'll be some delays. If there are delays, it will be due just to that. We are already working on our training program, and we'll have everything ready to go when we get that equipment delivered. One of the things that we decided to do, which was not covered by the bill, is we are including all of our neighborhood services team with cameras. We feel like the intent of the bill is not only for citizens, but for our officers. And, you know, they deal with a lot of different issues, whether it's code, people's properties, people's animals, really volatile situations. So we want to make sure that we're not just doing the basics that are required by this bill, but we are actually looking at the intent. So we formed SME, Subject Matter Expert Committee, with pretty much everybody that we could think of. So we've got administration, evidence, CSI, our lab guys, investigations, instructors from all different areas, tactics, firearms, TASER, DUI, DRE, our field training officers, our training unit, our press officer, users who have had these at other agencies that have come to us and are familiar with some of the pitfalls from the programs and some of the benefits. They've been very helpful in some of these conversations. Our motorcycle officers, K-9 SROs, recruiting, internal affairs, property and evidence, or property and equipment, our bike officers, IT, it's been a huge task for IT, our professional staff, finance and purchasing, legal, crime analysts and supervisors. So pretty much everyone that we could think of, we got in there, and I'm sure I missed somebody, but... And then we had to develop our business case, look at our contract, legal helped us with that, and start talking about what the budget process was going to be, what our needs were. Because certainly, this was not something that we planned on when we were looking at our budget for this last year, what positions we needed, the equipment, the cost, the storage. So we applied for a grant through the Colorado Department of Public Safety. And this grant is specific to the fact that we can't use it for personnel. It can only be used for equipment. We were able to get part of this large grant, which is wonderful, $235,000. So that will definitely help us towards that equipment cost. One of the things we did is we went to other police departments that have already implemented programs, some that have had it for years, and some that are new. And that really helped us not only see the facilities, but also talk about policy procedures, things that worked really well for them, things that have not been working well for them. And especially some of the agencies that have it as a newer program, they were really able to help us kind of figure out how we wanted to formulate some of our procedures based on what was working well for them. And some of the agencies that have had it for so long, I think have tended to forget some of those initial bumps along the way. So very helpful. And then we looked at what policies, what reference manuals, so we have to develop all of those for our agency. And so we look at other agencies, and then we're looking at our Kalia accreditation recommendations, and then just developing them on our own, based on our own needs and our own standards. We've selected some trainers, several people from the SME Committee, and then all areas of patrol. So we wanted to make sure we had people from different shifts and, you know, different assignments. So we have those. We have 10 officers that are training and deploying those cameras right now. And then November 1st, we implemented those. Some of the other things that we've just had to think about, that, you know, when you're just developing a program, you don't necessarily consider, are with all of these recordings, what category do they fall into, and what, how do we retain them? We don't want to just keep everything forever. That can, you know, becomes an issue with, you know, public records and all of that. So we want to make sure we're identifying these things appropriately, but we also want to keep things as long as we need them, and as long as we may, you know, have to have them, and make sure that we are, you know, not categorizing something incorrectly, and then we lose it and we need it down the road. So we've had to come up with that whole plan and develop those categories and figure out what's the easiest way. out what's the easiest way. And that's another thing is looking at how many categories. Some agencies have many categories and some have just a few. And it makes it easier for the officers if they're not having to scroll through lists and trying to remember, okay, what do I, you know, what is this exactly? Just because it started as a DUI and then became a crash, how do I categorize it? So... And then the IT plans, the facility analysis, we've got to do different lines for these docking stations. So, you know, that occurs at all of our different substations, it occurs at our NST house, our crit house, all these different areas. So we have to figure out how we're going to have these docking stations, where the lines are going to run, what it's going to look like. And then auditing these and when does a supervisor review these and how often and how many? And then the number of cameras, because we have specialized units such as our motorcycle officers who deploy from home or our K-9 officers who deploy from home or our SWAT officers who may be on call. So do they need more than one camera? So we looked at a lot of those different things, especially with remote docking and uploading. They can be manually uploaded, it just takes a long time and it's not a security thing. That was one nice thing that we learned through all of this, is that it all goes directly up to Axon's cloud. So it's not a, you know, secure, I mean, it's not an actual physical site where everything's kept. It's all in the cloud and it's all, doesn't go over, you know, the internet or anything like that as far as all these uploads, it'll go directly into that. So people can upload from their homes and still have them secure. It may take longer if they're on cellular and things like that, but it will be able to do that. So we could actually do this from the field too, if we have something immediate. And another thing it can do from the field is those live stream capabilities. And this is something that is probably a little controversial with some of our officers because they worry about us being able to remote in all the time and see what they're doing. And that's not the goal of it or the purpose of it, but it is something that we could do and we'll include it in our policy and procedures as to when the appropriate time is, if it's a tactical situation or an emergency situation where we need to check on our officer or find out what's happening. Equipment, Sergeant McCoy is going to talk about that a little bit.
Okay, before you do that, Mr. Jones has a question.
Well, and some of it may be answered in this, so if it is, then that's great and you can just answer it when you go over it. First of all, thank you for the undertaking of an unfunded mandate. Obviously not probably the way that the department wanted to approach this conversation, but appreciate the fact that you went in all, went all in on it. I really like the fact that you're including or looking at all parts of the department and who serves that. But a question about the SROs, obviously they're in a different situation and when they're contacting someone, it's probably going to be a minor. And so I'm assuming that there's a way to protect that minor in that contact.
Yes, and we will talk a little bit about redaction and the amount of work that that puts on our record staff and what that actually is required, because we will have to redact any of that similar to victims and, you know, other instances. So that is an important thing, but it's also one of those things that falls under the statute as far as any contact for law enforcement purposes has to be recorded.
Okay, perfect. And then this other question also may be in follow-up to what you're going to show us, but, or talk about. But with regard to the events, I was talking with a friend of mine who works for another agency who already have body worn cameras and he was saying that he can actually from his unit tag it somehow so that it's easier to find in kind of, if it's a murder case or something, that they want to get too quickly, they can tag it. And so there's, so I'm assuming that we have the ability to do those kinds of things as well.
Yes, so there's different programs, there's auto tagging and there's manual tagging and part of that is finding those categories so that we can put it in there correctly and double checking those. So that's another thing where we're going to have to, you know, make sure that people are categorizing them appropriately. But yes, auto tagging is great, there are certain times when it doesn't work. And one of those things is if you are not on the call initially, but when they create it, it may not tag it the right way. Also, if you are in an area, which we have a lot of, that are right on the two different jurisdictions, it may not auto tag it properly because it's going to not show that you're in Arvada.
Right.
So there's a lot of different things that can happen with it, so we need to make sure. But there are also nice things about it, so...
Well, and that was one of the other things he said was that, you know, if a sergeant or a higher ranking officer shows up on the scene first, being able to then transition kind of the film, the footage to whoever it is that's going to be taking over and writing the report. So anyway, it was just, it was intriguing to listen to him talk about it and then to hear this tonight. So again, I appreciate being all in on it. That's awesome.
Okay, great. Let's hear the next segment.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important piece of technology. When we started this endeavor, one theme remained clear, is that just because the Senate bill and the state legislature has mandated that the Arvada Police Department have cameras, doesn't mean that we're going to approach this project, this important project, half-heartedly. We look at this project and the body cams themselves as an opportunity for the citizens, for supervisors, for police officers and their peers to have the ability to showcase the hard work that they do, the good work that they do, the excellent quality of police work that we as a community have come to expect and as supervisors we expect of our officers and frankly, that you expect of us. So with that being said, Axon was chosen as a sole source vendor for this important project. What that means is frankly, they're expensive. However, they provide, from the research that we have done, top-quality customer service, not only on the front end in the research, purchasing and implementation of the cameras, but in the back end as far as customer service is concerned later. Inevitably, with any piece of technology, there's going to be issues. What you're paying for with Axon is the fact that they are willing to support the Arvada Police Department in the long term and that is before, during and after the contract is signed. So Axon, like many other technology companies, offers packages for their tech. We chose to go with the OSP7 Plus package. What that means for all of us in this room and our colleagues, officers who are working the street right now and the rest of the department, is not only does that include body worn cameras, but that allows the department to upgrade our TASER or our Conducted Electrical Weapons System to the TASER 7. It's an improved piece of technology, it's a very important piece of less lethal technology that we have already implemented at our department. And in the past, it has been cost prohibitive from us to upgrade to that TASER 7. With this package, those new TASER devices come with the body cams. So supply chain issues, if all goes well, fingers crossed, we should be receiving 203 of these Axon Body 3 cameras and the complimentary TASER 7 delivered to the Arvada Police Department. What that includes is also mounts for the cameras, which can vary depending on assignment. If you're on K-9 or motor unit or patrol or administration as a commander or above or on the SWAT team, you may want to use a different mount. That also includes unlimited storage, docking stations, and again, the support from Axon's ecosystem, which is all run through a product called Evidence.com. So if you figure every piece of, every minute of footage, every second of footage has to land somewhere and it has to be securely stored. Evidence.com is a safe and secure way to do that and that's one of the main reasons why we chose Axon. The workflow is very simple in that when the officer is done with their shift, they simply dock their camera, it uploads all of the photo, or excuse me, all of the videos, all of the footage securely to Evidence.com via the internet and that's secured through Microsoft Azure, which essentially means that it is a very small, small possibility that could, it could be subject to hacking and things like that. So security is incredibly important due to the sensitive material that this, these cameras will capture and that's one of the main reasons why we chose Axon. We already utilize Evidence.com for some of our other products to include TASER deployments. So it only made sense that we continue to go with Axon for our body worn camera technology as well. Evidence.com also is used by many other departments around the city of Arvada as well as Axon Body Cams as well. So that makes working with our partners at the DA's office, through critical incident response investigations, officer involved shooting investigations, large-scale criminal investigations, it makes it easier to work with our partners around the city of Arvada by all having the same product. So the Axon Body 3 is a very simple and easy-to-use piece of equipment, piece of technology. The battery life will remain consistent for an officer's shift and a little bit more. It mounts on their chest or just below or just above their belt line in order to capture a wide angle of whatever incident is occurring. And it is operated by simply pressing the button on the front twice, it starts a recording, holding it down to end the recording. And again, if I only make one video in my shift, I'm done, I dock it and the video is then uploaded automatically. To address your question, sir, you can, from your phone or from your computer in your car, make sure that video is tagged instantly with the appropriate information or even while a video is going on, while it's being recorded, you can actually mark certain important events within that video such as the suspect confesses to the crime, I want to fast forward to that later and know where that is instantly in an hour-long video. I press a button, it will automatically mark that event, which helps in our criminal investigations. So these cameras are very durable, they're very light, they go well with the officer's uniforms, they mount securely and we're very happy with this product so far in our testing and evaluation and look forward to implementing them for the rest of the department as soon as possible.
Okay. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, that was excellent. So you mentioned they're very durable and I see here drop test six feet, which I don't think we have any giants on our police force, so that should work.
They're all giants.
Well, figuratively, yes, literally, no. However, my question is, so as council members, we get updates on major incidents in the city and it seems every week there's somebody who tries to evade arrest, often violently towards our officers. If our officers are engaged in a violent encounter, which unfortunately does seem to be an inevitability, how well will these hold up in terms of being able to still, you know, not be smashed on the ground, but also potentially also not used as a weapon against our own officers if somebody were to try and scuffle with them?
Thank you for your question. The first point that I want to address is the mount. So the camera itself is very durable, it's very light and I don't have a lot of concern about the actual physical camera being used as a weapon, of course it could be. But the camera is only as secure as the mount on the officer's uniform and that's why we're going through all this testing to determine which mount is best and on what type of uniform is best, whether it's an external load-bearing vest carrier that the SWAT team wears or a traditional uniform, or if I'm working in the police administration and I'm going to lunch and I want to mount my camera right next to my badge if I'm on duty and armed and on the clock. So to answer your question, the camera itself is very durable and they have been known to fall off when the mount fails. Now, as far as the camera not being able to function, from the research that I have done and I've, and the footage that I've seen, the camera, I have not seen a camera itself fail, however, it can get turned off if this button is pressed and held down. Now inevitably, these will and have been lost by other departments because stuff happens. Going back to Axon, they have, similar to your Amazon.com account that you have where we all have products delivered to our door, they have a mailing system that is very quick to send a broken or frankly, a lost camera reported to be lost, send the broken camera back and receive a new one within days. So there are contingencies in place for that, however, the mounts are pretty secure and that will hopefully prevent against them falling out.
And we do have spares for officers as well. The package comes with a few spares. And one of the other things about it too is that it's not like someone can access the data inside. They can make as many videos on it as they want to, if they can figure out how to do that, but they can't access what's in there.
Thank you.
With your permission, I would be happy to pass this around.
Great, please do.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So do you, did the IT group figure out the cost of the internet to upload all these and how much that balance is going to cost us?
That's a good question. I'm, I know...
Because I'm doing this for CSP and they're freaking out about just the connection to the cloud.
And I don't know the exact number on that. I know they're working on all of that and figuring out all the different drops that we need and all of that. So I don't have a number on that for you, sir.
So Mark, could you just find out like the impacts of our operations on our internet connection? Because if they, if they're popping a dozen of these in or a couple dozen of them at a shift, it could bog our systems down and cost a lot of money that is unforeseen.
We'll get that information.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, if I may address that briefly, one of the things we looked at is hours of operation and when these cameras will be uploaded and due to the 24-hour nature of police work, it is nice to know that not all of the officers will be uploading their footage at one given time and it will be staggered throughout the evening and Monday. So that speaks in our...
Yeah, you just have to multiply how many people are watching Netflix at one time on your internet circuit. I mean, that's how it's going to be equivalent to, right? Because this is equivalent to one, one video game download, if you want to compare, you know, grant the thought, if you want to pick one, 34 gigs. Not that I know that.
Love when you talk like that.
It's funny, I know that kind of stuff. It's because I've done a study on this and it's, it's, it's an unforeseen cost that has impacted a lot of agencies that, yes, you're dealing with the cloud and yes, there's costs there, but there's this connection from the building to the cloud that is also could be tens of thousands of dollars just based on the video uploads. The other question, why I have the mic still, is when they go into Evidence.com and somebody wants to see something that's been redacted or whatever and they download it, are they paying the cost to download or are we picking up that bill?
So, I'm sorry.
Because anything downloaded from the cloud is a charge.
Right. I guess I just want to clarify, you're talking about Arvada Police Personnel downloading?
That, well, or if there's a cora request for this video.
Yeah, do you want to talk about that now?
If there's a, oh, is it later, is it later? If it is, we can, I can wait till then.
Yeah, and I'll talk about all the positions and what those responsibilities are and how that's related.
The financial responsibilities? Okay.
All right. All right. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I just have a simple question that I don't know the answer to. Will the officers go around with the camera on for their whole shift or do they turn them on and turn them off based on what they're doing at any given moment?
They'll turn them on and turn them off depending, so they can put them actually in a sleep mode, which makes it easier and faster for them to come out of that. So you'll see, if you walk through the police department, there's signs like at the locker rooms, there's signs walking in, reminding officers to either put them in sleep mode or take them out of sleep mode and that will help with that. There's also different features where they can mute it. Part of the procedures and stuff will be if they're going to mute it, they're going to need to kind of dictate or narrate to that as to why they're doing that. So they can say, I'm going to mute this for tactical discussions or I'm going to mute this, you know, for whatever reason is happening at the moment where they don't need it recorded.
I'm going to the men's room.
Exactly, yes. Hopefully they don't have to mute or narrate in that much detail, but, but they could. So yes, so things like that will, will be part of the procedure and the policy so that it's understood as to why if somebody turns one off. Again, like if you're not going to be in contact with a citizen where you're going to be interacting in for law enforcement purposes, it doesn't have to be on. So for example, if you're at a death scene and there's nobody else around and you're just waiting for the coroner and you're not doing, you know, you know, talking to family members or gathering information, there's really no reason for it to be on recording that whole time. There are some officers at other agencies that have just been super nervous because of the language of the bill that they've just said, I just want to leave it on all the time. But people are getting out of that mode a little bit when, when they start to feel more comfortable with how it works and just the procedure of going through sleep mode and going out, so...
So they're, so they're on all the time unless there's a specific reason for it to be off, rather than they're only on when there's a specific reason for them to be on?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Let's hear the third part of the presentation.
All right. So I know you've all already seen this since it came through on the contract on March 7th, but this is just a breakdown of that cost. We know it's a huge cost, but over the five years, it's, you know, over, well, almost $3 million and that's broken down per year. And then again, the grant money that we received will only go towards equipment. So we'll have to break down this contract more because it's kind of all bundled the way they do it through OSP7. So we'll have to break it down to show our grant that we're using it for the equipment and not the personnel. There's a lot of different options that they have working right now. Some of the things will actually come with our package and we can decide whether we use it or not. A lot of agencies like CSP are using Axon Fleet or going that direction for dash cam, drone software, they have Axon Air. We have a very large drone program which is very successful, so we're certainly looking at that. Their virtual reality training is a really neat program where you can go through some of these de-escalation and conflict training and actually experience it in a, you know, more realistic thing than just us hanging out in red man suits and talking to each other. And then there's a trigger switch, which when your firearm is drawn, it automatically turns on the camera. That will come with our package, but there are agencies that are having a lot of trouble with that right now and we want to make sure that it, when we deploy that, that it is something that is functioning and working well for us. Light bar switch is another one where automatically if you turn on your overhead lights in the vehicle, it would activate it. And then one of the other programs that we're looking at, hopefully we'll have implemented by the end of the year, is the interview software, which is called Axon Interview and we'll have that in all of our different interview rooms because CourtSmart, which the software that we've been using is not working very well. And so this is one of those programs that we're really excited about using as well and it will be very similar and pretty much interface with all of this very... pretty much, um, interface with all of this very easily.
Staffing?
So, first I want to thank you, uh, city leadership and council for the recognition and understanding of the magnitude of this project and the staff that will need, um, to be in place to manage it. Um, this first slide is about our digital media techs. Um, they're really going to be the backbone of the backside of the system. They're going to be the ones verifying the accuracy of the category, the categories, um, to make sure that we are not retaining, um, unnecessary video and, and paying those substantial storage fees. Um, they're also going to be our subject matter experts to help train our officers and really make sure that they have that awareness of what needs to happen on this backside of the system. So, our digital records technicians or digital record specialists, they're the ones that are going to be doing the redacting and, and addressing those CCJRA and those Cora requests. Um, they're kind of more of the public-facing entity of, of managing this data. Obviously, as we discussed, there is significant liability in protecting our victims, our juveniles, um, and our criminal justice information, and they're taking that, that role in this to make sure that the redaction and the dissemination is just as it should be. Um, beyond, beyond that, um, with the hiring of our first two of these positions, um, we've been able to actually work with the cameras, with the footage, with this testing phases. We've, we've had some critical incidents that we've already had to redact. We've had six requests from the public, obviously, the DA's office is requesting video. So, having these in place right now, we are getting the appropriate training, so they can be the SMEs, um, so that they can make sure that we do stay on top of this and in front of this with the changing technology. Um, however, with the staffing transitions, we have moved some of our, um, staff members from current roles into body cam positions, so that leaves us vacant in other roles. So, it leads us to, um, our requests for budget in 2023. Um, since we were granted the body cam positions in 2022, we'll be asking for, um, the positions that we requested last year to include, um, an additional evidence technician to help us with some of this workload. As I talked about before, there's, um, tremendous, um, responsibility, liability, um, and the redaction itself is, is very tedious and very time-consuming. Even with the expert software that comes with Axon, it requires six times normally, six times the length of the footage. So, for example, if you have multiple officers on an incident, it will require an additional amount of time to redact, and with each frame, they do have to review and view multiple times. So, they will be viewing sometimes, um, rather graphic, um, images, um, to make sure that this video is, is really as it should be before it can be released. Um, one of the things that you, um, spoke about, Mr. Pfeifer, was that cost. Um, the going rate of our neighboring agencies is about $30 for that first hour, um, and then it goes up incrementally, um, beyond that. Um, we have spoken to our counterparts at the city of Westminster, and some of those take beyond 12 hours, um, to end up managing and, and redacting appropriately. Um, so obviously, the cost can be quite considerable. Um, we are hoping to have our fee schedule over to, um, legal in the very near future, so that we can get it on this agenda in, in May or June to have that in place before we go live with our body cams.
And we just wanted to note, uh, really quick, this is going to be very important for not only our community but for our department. We've had, um, this program up and running just since November 1st. We only have 10 cameras on the street, and during that time, we've captured one officer-involved shooting, almost two. The only reason we didn't have the second one is because the officer who was involved in that shooting was scheduled to have surgery, so he gave his camera to somebody else, and then the surgery was delayed a week. So, he was out on the street for a week without his body camera, otherwise he would have had that on camera as well. And then we've had two significant officer-involved injuries. Um, this footage, um, as, um, Kenny mentioned, is very graphic. Um, it's very clear, it's exceptional quality. It shows our officers multitasking in the most extreme situations. Um, I know some members have had the opportunity to see some of, of the footage, um, and you'll see an officer, you know, chasing a suspect who they know is armed, um, with, you know, deadly force, and they've got their firearm out, they're running, it's dark, they've got their flashlight out, they're airing information on the radio, they're communicating with their partners, they're doing all of these things, they're taking into consideration all of those legal, uh, ethical issues that they have to in order to make those decisions, and it's all captured on this footage. So, this is going to be something that is very important, not only for our department but for the community, and we just, we thank you for your support on this, but also, you know, just really wanted to kind of give you an overview of why this is such a big project, but also, um, just some gravity as to, um, some of the things that we have captured just in this short amount of time, and I know that's only going to continue, so.
Very good. I don't see any additional questions, or if we have any, uh, Mr. Mormon?
I just want to say thank you for your service and for your service to our community and for your work on this. I do think it's a very important new technology for us to be using for our public safety, and, and I'm very hopeful that it will be very utilized by, by us here and in helping improve our safety, so thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer?
I just want to say, you know, we were just told to do this, and I think our police department has always been top shelf in the almost 11 years I've been here. Um, this is a top-down approach. Um, we're complying, but at the end of the day, in no way in my mind does that, uh, tarnish the integrity of our police department or the professionalism our police officers have and always had. So, I know that's a hard pill to swallow for our officers who have pride in the quality of work they do. It's just unfortunately, it's a top-down approach, um, to us. And, uh, I think I'm more frustrated with the fact of the price tags associated to this unfunded mandate, but I want our officers to know that this hasn't, this, you know, we all know it's a, a state-level thing, but at the end of the day, uh, I think this council can say that, uh, we have the best police officers in the state.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll certainly echo that, and, and, you know, I, I've come to look at this, and, and, you know, I've been quoted in the past that, you know, I didn't really think this was something our VADA needed because, because of the quality of our officers. I'm now to the point of saying, "I want it for the protection of our officers," um, because, um, false allegations get made, um, and as part of your, your presentation tonight, I think this is going to be an opportunity in some sad and unfortunate circumstances where, um, our officers are going to be vindicated for the actions that they take, and, and it's going to be an education to the public as to why those kind of actions have to be taken. So, thank you all for your hard work on this, and, uh, um, we had a former governor who said he wouldn't pass any unfunded mandates, but, uh, the, uh, current legislature has not followed on with what, uh, now Senator Hickenlooper was so kind to do for us a few years ago with that. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Devon, we've got one more workshop.
Yes, we do. Uh, we will now present, uh, water and sewer infrastructure capacity needs and assessment and roadmap, and we'll start with Director of Utility Sharon Israel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, it is a pleasure once again to come and talk to you all about, um, the next steps that we're taking with our water and sewer infrastructure planning. Um, we've got, um, just a reminder, a series of three workshops we're doing, so this is the second of three. The first one, we came, um, two weeks ago and, uh, talked to you about where we had stood with, um, our, uh, water demand planning, and that was really important because it helps us define what the timing needs to be for especially these next few years of infrastructure projects. Um, tonight, we're here to talk about, um, some specific, uh, what we're calling a roadmap, which is really the next three to five years of projects that, um, we, uh, are making plans to deliver, um, but we need some policy direction from council tonight, so that will tee us up for our third workshop on this topic, which is in about a month, it'll be end of April, and at that one, we'll be bringing to you some more detailed, fine-tuned, um, financial, um, recommendations, and also a discussion on level of service. Um, next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to spend a very brief, um, amount of time talking about why, um, partly because you've heard us many times now talk about extensive needs we have on water and sewer infrastructure, um, but there's some specific questions, again, we, we'd like your guidance on tonight. Um, we have our team here, Mary Stahl's going to be speaking on some of the technical, um, review details and recommendations for, again, this roadmap in the next few years where we have a lot of anticipated planned development. Um, there's also, uh, a cost associated with expanding our infrastructure to, to, um, account for that. Jaclyn is going to review, um, to the extent you would like detail, on, um, a 10-year proposed budget, um, that includes funding all of the projects we're talking about. Um, you have a hand, handouts in your, um, in your packet. Um, we're not planning to walk through those handouts tonight unless you've got specific questions about them. We're happy to stay as long as you like, of course, and talk about every line if, if you'd like to do that. Um, and then to wrap up, Mr. Devon and I will be, again, um, asking for some guidance on, on policy direction, so that when we return to you next month, um, we are, um, proposing what council would like us to, um, provide for the future of our water and sewer infrastructure. Next slide? Uh, okay, next slide? Thank you. You've seen this many times before, I'll make it brief. All of this falls under the strategic results associated with master planning our infrastructure. These strategic results were originally discussed in 2019, adopted in 2020, and we've been really putting pedal to the metal to make sure that we're, um, delivering on those. Um, this milestone three, um, directs us by the end of 2023 to have a sustainable, um, financial strategy for delivering all the, on all the recommendations from master planning work. Next slide? You guess, you've seen this also, um, so just real quick, this is a long line of many decades of really great planning that we've done at the city. Um, so, where we are right now is implementing master plans that include both, uh, tremendous reinvestment needs. We've got a lot of infrastructure end of useful life, and at the same time, a lot of demand to build capacity, um, to meet the needs for plan development. So, there's just a lot of, um, of, uh, just volume of capital projects that we're working on delivering right now. Um, interestingly, uh, I recently, uh, Mary recently found, um, a comprehensive plan update from 1991 that we reviewed in the context of, of what we're doing today, and, um, I have to say that we've been very consistent, probably since the early 70s, on being really thoughtful about making sure we've got enough water and enough infrastructure, um, for all the planned development. So, it was really great reading that from 30 years ago and seeing like, "Hey, this is really our culture, this is what our VADA's good at, um, this is why we're in such a good position today." Next slide? This is, this is the meat of what we're talking about tonight. Um, as you may recall, when we've brought some of the master planning work with you, toward, to you the last 12 to 18 months, um, we've determined that the resources required in order to deliver all the master planning projects exceeds what we can afford in our 10-year CIP. And so, um, one of the asks tonight is, are, will you direct us to work on raising the resources necessary to, um, to deliver on all these projects, and we'll talk to you about the trade-offs and why. Um, part of it, like I said, is that we've got a lot of infrastructure end of nearing or exceeding its capacity or end of useful life. Um, we're just in a situation where both of these things are happening at the same time, and so there's a lot of, um, of resource requirements, both in terms of revenue, and then also in terms of staffing, if we're going to deliver, um, especially on a three-to-five-year time range. So, again, the policy direction is on raising revenue. Um, with your direction, we can come back next month with a lot more details on what that looks like. Um, but, as you may recall, the revenue that we receive, um, for these types of projects, it goes into an enterprise fund, so it's not funded from general fund taxes. Um, it is funded directly for fees for service, so those include rates that folks pay for water and sewer, it includes bimonthly service fees, um, it includes developer contributions, um, it includes bond proceeds, includes tap fees, which we're, I'd like your feedback on this. We're talking about rebranding to system development fees. Um, a lot of other agencies have gone away from tap fees because it sounds like you're just paying to tap into a system. A system development charge is actually more holistic than that because it does consider the fact that we have all this other infrastructure we need to upgrade. Um, so, raising revenue is a policy question. I'd like, um, to ask for council's input tonight. Um, a trade-off that we could make is pacing some of these CIP projects. So, as you're going to hear Mary and Jaclyn talk about, there's a lot going on with, um, uh, a desire to meet the needs of plan development, reinvest in our infrastructure, and do it in a three-to-five-year timeframe. Um, if we spread that out, it has pros and cons. Um, you know, pros being that, you know, we don't have to raise as much revenue as quickly, um, cons being that, um, costs escalate over time and that, you know, it increases things like the risk of failure, which gets to the third point here, which is risk tolerance. Um, as you're going to hear a little bit more detail, we are, um, close to, um, capacity in several areas of our infrastructure, and there's a risk of, of failure associated with that. Um, so, what we want to provide, and what we believe that we've got a good technical plan to do, is to be able to, um, deliver capacity that meets the needs of all our plan development, that we are delivering reinvestment projects that reduce the risk of failure, and we're not increasing the risk of any other kinds of, um, failures like a sanitary sewer overflow. So, um, those are the three things that I think about as sort of the, they hang in balance with each other. There's a matter of raising revenue, there's a matter of, um, you know, the timing of delivery of these projects, and in the meantime, what's our risk of, of having some kind of system failure? Um, so again, looking ahead, um, based on the feedback we get tonight, we will do some more, um, fine-tuning of financial options, um, where we could, you know, propose to raise different sources of revenue and what that might look like, translated, um, in general into some, um, estimates of rates and fees. Um, and then we're also, next month, going to talk about what I think is a key underpinning of everything we've been, um, communicating with you about these master plans, excuse me, and that is level of service. Um, we are, uh, the, we are a service provider, then a lot of ways people expect us to never fail. Um, the water is always fresh and clean and plentiful, um, we have plenty, plenty of it, um, there is always a, um, you know, clean, magical way that the, the wastewater and sewage goes downhill, and you never just have to see it again or think about it again. Um, well, we think about that stuff all the time, and, and so what we're doing is defining a level of service for the city in a way we haven't done before, so, just sort of a preview for what you're going to see, um, next month. Next slide? So, some of these are just hitting some of the points I touched on. Um, we want to maintain level of service, and we want to support plan development, but if we're going to do that, we need to raise more revenue. Next slide? Um, we're also, um, near, at, or exceeding capacity in some of our system. This is a, a manhole at 76th and Sheridan. Um, if you have already been on the North Trunk Line tour, you've seen this manhole, um, for those of you who are going to go on the tour, um, you will see it. Uh, this is one of the weak spots in our system right now. This is a higher risk of a sanitary sewer overflow, um, because it's so shallow, and because at that manhole, excuse me, at 76th and Sheridan, every single toilet that flushes in Candellas in the northwest, and all the way, um, east along the alignment, including communities like Lake Arbor, um, and then south to 76th and Sheridan, every toilet flushes through that manhole. Um, and excuse me if that paints kind of a yucky picture, so, but that's what we're dealing with. So, um, we are, this is a good example of a project that Mary's going to talk about, um, in this big picture of, um, all the projects we're juggling. This is one where we're, we're thinking, you know, this needs some immediate attention so we don't have a sanitary sewer overflow here. Next slide? Um, so again, these are the risks, um, we've got risk of system failure. Um, we really need to make sure our system can meet fire flow and peak demands. People expect that from us from a level of service standpoint. Um, we don't want to be in a position where we have long-term watering restrictions. I think we talked about this quite a bit in our last workshop, we've got plenty of water. We are in a great position as far as water supply goes, um, thanks to all the great planning and work done, um, by those who- and work done by those who came before us. And with gross reservoir right on the horizon now. But watering restrictions related to infrastructure capacity are a real possibility. We've already seen that to some extent in Candellas. So before I hand it off to Mary and Jaclyn, I want you to know that what you're gonna hear is an extremely well thought out, technical solution to everything I just shared with you. So we have a great path forward. I'm very confident in myself, and so I hope that you see that too. I don't think there's anything here that we can't find a solution to. Where we're going to need direction is again, on raising the revenue so we can do it. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna hand it to Mary. She's gonna go through some of the really key findings, and especially this three to five year timeframe. Thanks.
Thanks, Sharon. I'm Mary Stahl, and the mask is because I'm getting over the spring cold that went through my house. And I don't know how long you're contagious. I just don't want to share because it was miserable.
It must have been Mike's fault.
I absolutely will say that. So the pumped zones. We're gonna start on water supply, just a couple of slides, and then I'll move on to the wastewater side. I'm gonna speak specifically to the pump zones. It's not to say we don't have needs in the gravity side, but the pump side, as we all know, because we had watering restrictions last summer, are a little more critical and more time sensitive. What do we mean by pumped zones? In this map, the dark black outline that covers the pink, dark yellow, gold, dark red, dark green, and then the little bits of our VADA that are west of Highway 93 are the areas that we pump to, that we cannot serve by gravity. Generally, west of Indiana and north of Adiath, although areas like Quaker Acres and some of West Woods are also impumped zones. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna start with storage, but we do have challenges with storage, pumping, and pipes, all three pieces that make up a distribution system. Dark blue at the bottom, that's the storage we have in these pumped zones. It's about 3.2 million gallons. The next little band, that's Coal Creek. That's the one that's going up at 72 and 93. It should be online next month. That is super exciting. It's a great milestone. And in fact, we're filling it in two weeks for its first test. So super exciting milestone. That'll take us to about 4.7 million gallons. Unfortunately, the storage we need for what we have, for the demands we had in 2020, is about another 2 million gallons over that. So that's what we're talking about when we say we've got this immediate need. But let's not look, what do we need right now? What do we need long term? And going back to the demand study I presented at the last meeting, is that if we look at that lower range, we need just over 3 million gallons that build out in the pump zones. If we look at that upper range, we need just over four. So somewhere between 3 and 4 million gallons is what we're needing to get us to build out. So next slide. So how are we going to get there? What is our plan? Well, we're working with JCMD on locations and funding. Their master plan, way back when, and updated since, indicates that they need to provide about 3 million more gallons to serve their area. And so we're working with them on both location and funding. We'll have an IGA eventually to bring to you, to put all that in place. With the goal that we have a tank site selected this year, we go into design this year, and we go into construction next year, and that it'll be in service in 2024. It takes about six to nine months to design a tank, and it takes about 12 months to build one. So, once we have the site selected, then we'll work on where pumping and piping, what that looks like and where it should go. So, but we're gonna start with where do we put the storage?
Mary, I have a quick question. Where is that tank likely to be? I mean, just, not specifically, but just in general?
It is likely to be, well, it could, we are looking at a couple of the tank sites we already have. We might put some storage at Candellas, and in fact, we are likely to put some storage at the existing Candellas tank, which is on Candellas Parkway. And if you don't pay any attention, you just see a little building and you wouldn't see it. It's near the, I don't actually know the cross street. Do you guys know the cross street? I have no idea.
Does that involve just adding a second tank that's connected together? Or does it involve expanding the one that's there?
We're not sure yet. And then we will need an additional site, and that's what we're working on. Likely will be south of Highway 72, and then to the west. Have to be pretty specific on elevation with tanks to make them work right.
The little bit of our VADA that's out there west of Highway 93 and north of Highway 72, will that water be supplied with pumped pressure? Or would there be a tank there that provides gravity pressure?
So we already have a tank on the west side that does provide water back into Candellas, but we pump, we will pump from that tank up to Canyon Pines. I presume you're talking about Canyon Pines. And then we will have a second pump station in the development itself that will provide pressure for that development.
Right, to pressure the lines. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will move on to the sewer side. Next slide, please. And the next slide, please. So I'm gonna start with very, very briefly some of the things we talked about last time because I know that in January, we gave you lots and lots of detail about sewer, and I'm sure it was riveting. I think the tour might have been more riveting. But anyway, this is the same map we presented in January, and it's the system capacity map at a 25-year storm for existing flows. And we've got bright red sections, they're outlined in black, which means that we're surcharging, which means sewer pipes are under pressure. That's not a good thing if that's not what they're designed for. Next slide, please. And then HDR gave us this map, which is identifying the projects that are needed to resolve that long-term for build out. There's a few sections in there that aren't circled, but as we talked about in January, much of that north side is at or near end of useful life. It was built in the early 60s. I know Sharon said it seems like we're talking about a lot. I think about what our predecessors did and how much they built in the 60s. It blows me away. It really does. I mean, they built a water plant, they built this, they built, it blows me away. Anyway, sorry, I digress. Anyway, so we took all these different projects for both the north system and the central system, and that's what we developed the plan around. Next slide. So we have some very detailed findings with the sewer master plan, far more detailed than we presented in January. But we did tell you about the four immediate project needs, and I did wanna give you some updates on those. To start with, Alkira Lift Station, we had a workshop today with JCMD, who is our financing partner on that, because they built the original one, and they were, they're the ones who are supposed to expand it. 81st and Kipling, which was a critical project because we're concerned about backflowing into basements. Design began this month. 76th and Sheridan, we have identified the pieces and parts we need to buy. And my understanding is, I think staff has, I don't know if they've bought them yet, but if not, they've identified and they're working on the purchase orders. Don't have quite as great a news on our crossing of the railroad tracks at Tennyson. We've identified a number of complexities on that one, such that we don't want to line that pipe. We don't think that that would be a long-term solution. So we hope to have a consultant hired this next quarter, it's not April yet, so that we can just work on the replacement pipe for that piece. Next slide, please. Additionally, on the detailed findings was that we identified the flows for each and every segment of each interceptor, under existing conditions, under build-out conditions, and under the different storm flows that we talked about. The consultant identified for us the risk of sanitary sewer overflow at every manhole and at every segment that has people's houses connected to it, service connections. With that information, as a team, we could, we then took all that information to prioritize projects and develop this plan so that we were addressing risk. Next slide. So, but I also wanna share that we are actually, it sounds really bad. It's not as bad as quite as it sounds. When we complete those immediate needs, under existing conditions, we are at minimal risk of a sanitary sewer overflow under a 10-year storm condition or a smaller storm. That's important because that puts us within industry standards. Our industry generally tries to aim to have your sewer handle storms between 10 and 25-year, along with your peak sanitary sewer flows. So that's good. The bad news is, is in a lot of cases, we're doing that under pressure conditions. We're just not actually spilling. We do need quite a few projects by 2025 to maintain that current level of risk and to allow development to continue forward as has been proposed and as we think it's going to move forward. Next slide.
Mary, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah, of course.
Sorry to keep interrupting you. I have a, just a techn, a question to help understand these as we go. You keep talking about the 25-year storm conditions. We're talking about the sanitary sewer here, however, not the storm sewer.
We are.
So can you explain just, just why it is that storm conditions tax the sanitary sewer system? I mean, I think I can think of a couple reasons why.
Absolutely.
But, but also then maybe how, how big that magnitude of that change is? So from an average day versus a day when you're having a storm event?
So it's called inflow and infiltration, and it can be groundwater or stormwater. That's why there's two words used. And what it has to do with is that particularly in older neighborhoods, but not just older neighborhoods, a sanitary sewer service line is not always built watertight. My neighbors tell me mine was not built with gaskets. It's just like pipe laid together without any gaskets, so I'm sure all kinds of stuff gets in. So when it rains, water can come in that way. Additionally, most manhole lids are not watertight. We, we can build watertight manhole lids, but they're more expensive, and there's some other things around them that we choose not to. And so when water's flowing down the street, it can come into manholes. Manholes degrade over time, and again, water can then come in through the joints of the manhole. So unlike a water system, which you make sure is absolutely watertight because it's, because we're drinking it, on the sanitary side, it's not watertight. So things can come in through manholes, through services.
Okay. And what's the magnitude? Does, does a 25-year storm add 10% to the flow? Does it add 50% to the flow? I mean, do you have any data on what actually happens?
We do for different parts of the system, but it depends. So the parts of the system that were built of PVC are more watertight than the systems, parts of the system that were built from older materials. So that, that changes. There's lots of things that go into it, so it's not quite a, I can't give you an exact number. You've probably heard this on the storm side as well. It's been a long time practice to call it a 10-year storm or a 25-year storm. We can really equate that to a 10% chance of happening with a 10-year storm, or a 4% chance of happening with a 25-year storm. So that, that can kinda give you an idea on magnitude as well. But the amount of flow really, it's really more, at what point do we start pressurizing that sewer? So in some senses, it doesn't really matter with how much more we're having to try to convey because we have this pipe size we have, and if we're pressurizing it, well, we've pressurized it.
I guess I still have a little bit hard time with that, with, with, I mean, I understand the pipe getting pressurized and why you don't wanna do that, but just with, it would seem like you could go to that location at 76th and Sheridan, for instance, and on an average day, you can have a rough estimate of what the flow is, and then on a hard rainy day, you can go look at it again.
Well, that one, actually, because I-
Say it's 5% more, it's 10% more, it's 50% more, you know what?
Because we've looked at that one really closely, on an average day, it runs about half full. And under a 10-year storm, it is, and it takes more flow once it becomes pressurized, so it's more than double. It's under at least one foot of pressure.
Okay. So, so a 10-year storm in places doubles the amount of water in the pipe?
Yep.
Okay.
I still think we need to get a big boulder to put on that manhole.
Well, we're actually going to lock it down, so, almost.
So I, I know one of the things that we, that we've done, and maybe it's just with the smaller lines, but is the, the lining, epoxy lining or fiberglass lining to help both extend their life, but also it really helps infiltration a whole bunch? You know, part of solving this is, is making changes, either upsizing the components or doubling it up, putting two pipes where there's now one. But is, is there also an option for efficiencies, like lining the pipes and things like that to increase?
So I, I would say that we've already obtained most of those efficiencies, and I think that's measurable in our bills from Metro. We've had population increases, and our flow bill from Metro has not increased significantly. So, so we've already obtained those efficiencies.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So when we were putting together, from all this detailed information, how are we going to move forward? What were our goals? The goals were to maintain our level of risk at that 10-year storm, to stay within the high end of the industry standard. It's kinda backwards, 10 years, high end, 25 years, low end, but that's that 10% to 4% risk. That anything that we do will take us to build out at the 4% risk or that 25-year storm. And then can we pace the CIP improvements to maintain development timing such as we think it's going to happen? Having conversations with Ryan and our partners in planning. Next slide, please. So what is the plan? I'm presenting it two ways. One is in table. There'll be a map in a couple of slides. It is ambitious. It is achievable. Portions of it are funded, portions of it are not. I think the important thing to take from this table is that the top five projects we intend to have in place by the end of 2024. So it is ambitious. The top two are already underway. I've talked about the Tennyson project. Preliminary design of the entire North Trunk Line. That is one way for us to mitigate risk, but to do this in a hopscotch fashion, attacking the highest-risk pieces first. Normally, when you build a sewer, you start at the bottom, and you work your way up so that it stays at the nice grade that you want it to. Well, unfortunately, our highest-risk areas are this one, and then that one, and then that one. So we figure if we do a preliminary design of the whole thing, and then we go in and do those pieces, we've mitigated that risk of not starting at the bottom and just working our way up. And then that fifth one is two places where we have, will have, we don't have right today, but we will fairly soon have risk of sanitary sewer overflows in people's basements. And then we work through the rest of the projects. Important is that we've been talking an awful lot about North Trunk Line. The Central Ralston Trunk Line, which runs through the middle of the city, has got some issues too on capacity and condition. So we have projects identified for that as well. Some of those are funded, some are not, and those need to be completed by 2027. Next slide, please. So the benefits of doing it in this fashion is that we move from our highest risk to our lowest risk, which we think is important. Means I, I think we're spending our money in a prudent way. Start with what's, what's the worst. That preliminary design, as I mentioned, mitigates our risk of not doing this in the conventional fashion. That preliminary design also gives us more detailed modeling and risk analysis, or that's what we intend to put in the scope, just keeping us on track. Double checking that what we're doing is the right thing to do and is our timing, the right timing. It allows development to continue forward, which is important because that gives us some of that revenue that Sharon was talking about, that system development charge. That, that's part of, of how we pay for this. The other part is that this plan also incorporates that reinvestment and condition need. I mentioned that not all those projects touch each other, that there's some gaps. We've included those gap pieces within the projects so that when we're done, we have all of the North Trunk Line is ready to go for another 50 years, or that's our intent. Next slide. What are challenges with this? It is ambitious, which means resource needs are intense for both funding and staffing, and they're very, very near term. One of the things that I know we've been frustrated with as staff as we go through this is, well, we've gotta get some capacity with each project, right? No, because all the new development, not all, but 98% of it is at the far upper end, so we don't get any capacity till we do the whole thing. Because there's, there's always another capacity limited segment until we get the whole thing done, because all the new stuff is up at the end. And then, as I mentioned, not building bottom to top could present some construction challenges, but we think we're mitigating that with that preliminary design. Next slide. Central Ralston Trunk, similar benefits and, and challenges with, again, we're addressing high-risk sewers near term, and then we address the other areas as they become more risky. The resource needs for it are less intense than if we were to try to address that, all of it, all at once. We are gonna have an issue of resources competing with the North Trunk Line. These are two major interceptors. And again, not building bottom to top can present some challenges. Next slide. So can we meet these goals? We absolutely can. We absolutely can. With revenue and staffing, we can absolutely do this. But we need the revenue and the staffing to do it. Next slide. And then I promised a picture. So this is the picture. That top red line is the North Trunk Line. The top graph is for the North Trunk Line. And then the middle, you can see the Central Trunk. And that graph in the bottom left is for the Central Trunk. Those graphs indicate each project. The bars are cost. You'll see some error bars on those costs. That's because we're at conceptual design. And I'm always super nervous about presenting cost at conceptual design because we're doing a dollar per linear foot. We don't really know what it's going to, I mean, we do know what it's going to cost, but that dollar per linear foot can change a lot depending on what you find when you get out in the field. And then there's a risk line, which shows relatively how our risk decreases as we build each of the projects. So next slide. And Jaclyn's going to talk to you about how much things cost, staffing.
Oh, come on, Mary. You don't want to talk about the cost?
I can.
Well, thank you. Next slide. So pairing with the map and the information that Mary presented, I wanted to supply to you an update on what we've called our one-page summary handouts for both sewer and water projects. I've just shown a snapshot on the slide here, but we have a lot of details in front of you in the wider tabloid sheet. But this gives you the relative magnitude of what we're talking about in terms of our currently planned and funded projects versus the unfunded needs identified through these master planning efforts. And in the handouts, you'll also see those dollars spread according to the timeline that Mary presented earlier in terms of what we think is ambitious but achievable in terms of best-case delivery of these projects. So overall, on the water roadmap, you see that we still have some significant unfunded needs. Many of these associated with reaching build-out conditions around our treatment facilities. I just note that if you were reviewing any prior versions of this worksheet, you'll notice that our funded projects have actually reduced from the prior version we presented to you last September. We've delivered some of the larger pump station projects and chemical system improvement projects at the Ralston plant. And so some of those numbers have changed as we've completed the work. Next slide, please. Sewer roadmap, we put it on the same scale so you can appreciate the level of work that needs to go into both the water fund and the sewer fund projects. But we still show 78 million in unfunded needs to deliver the sewer roadmap as presented today. Again, the timeline matches the proposed delivery phase for each of the segments that Mary outlined earlier. And those are reflected in the unfunded needs. I guess a couple of other notes that I just wanted to make that changed in the handout since the last versions we've presented to you on the water side. We've chosen to highlight developer contributions. So Mary mentioned a number of these, especially the immediate need projects, or we started them, they're underway. Those came from the JCMD contributions. And so we've gotten that work started, initiated with the initial AGA that was approved by council. And that is helping us, again, conduct those immediate need projects as well as the preliminary design for the North Trunk Line. Next slide, please. Are there any specific questions? I promised to not go into too much detail on the handouts, but be available to answer any project-specific questions. And certainly, anything to do with the phasing. We have Chris and Mary here to also help answer some details.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. This may not be what you're looking for, for questions as far as project-specific. But, and Mary, you might weigh in on this. I was struck, or I was looking at, trying to understand a couple of those slides, and I think there's a lot of stuff on there as we were going along. And tell me if I'm kind of reading this right, at least on the sewer side. What we're looking to achieve is the 25-year risk, so less risk, in about a 10-year timeframe to get these projects done. And the question I would have is if we change our goal a little bit and instead achieve a 10-year risk over the time that we construct those projects and then achieve the rest of the risk reduction over the next number of years? I think you mentioned, you know, at the completion of this, we'd like to have 50 years worth.
Right.
We've got it all done. Is there kind of a, it gets to phasing, I guess, phasing or strategy, a way of kind of essentially spreading the cost out by assuming a little more risk now, but mitigating that risk later to do that? Are things like that viable decisions to be made on this kind of stuff?
They are, and that goes to what one of Sharon's questions was about risk. So those, the projects right now are set up on timing that we don't take on more risk than a 10-year storm.
Okay.
In other words, the system is basically right there. And as we add each toilet, it just keeps. In terms of being with, quote, "industry standards," we're not within industry standards with regards to capacity. But we are just squeaking by within industry standards with regards to risk of spilling sewage into basements or on the ground.
Right.
And so we've timed those projects so that we stay just within that. So that was, that's the plan we've presented.
Right, okay. And then, you know, again, this is a conversation that may not be for you guys, but it also in looking at this, where it's kind of a bunch of infrastructure investments in a relatively short period of time that will serve for a really long period of time, that, you know, rather than trying to raise the revenue now to pay for those all now when their lifetime is longer, to me, it looks like just an absolute natural spot for bonding or borrowing to accomplish some of these, where you, you know, you get the money now, you do the projects now, you pay for them over time, spreading the cost off, hopefully reducing the demand to raise rates or fees high enough to just cash pay for them. Is that a viable option as well?
I was going to say, I could wax poetic on it, but I think I'll let Sharon talk about generational equity and bonding.
Thank you. There's another quantitative risk question, though. Mary's going to come back up here. I think she did a great job. We never want to exceed the 10-year storm risk. And so that's what this, that's what this plan does.
So I was wrong on that one slide about thinking this program gets us to the 25-year storm risk in a short period of time rather than just keeps us at the 10? I was misinterpreting that.
Yes. Yes, so exactly. And I think this is a really good point of clarification because turning that risk dial is one of the things we talked about. And that is, we never want to exceed, at any point in time, with contemplated development and everything else, we never want to exceed the 10-year storm risk. That is a 10% chance of some kind of sewer overflow in a year. But when we go to design new infrastructure, it's designing it to the 25-year storm, that that will get us the next 50 years. So if we're going to go in and cut open the ground and put a pipe in, we're going to put that pipe in for a 25-year storm to build out. But we're going to do that in pieces. And while we're doing it maybe in one piece, another piece is still at the 10-year storm risk. And it isn't until we get through the whole thing that we've fully mitigated it to the 10-year.
Okay.
I hope that helps. I mean, this-
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's kind of like bottlenecks, right? You reduce a bottleneck and it doesn't go away, it just goes somewhere else.
Yeah. And what Mary described is, I think, a really elegant and efficient way to say, we're going to address the highest-risk bottlenecks one at a time and phase them. And, but like she also said, until the whole pipe is bigger, we haven't really mitigated it as far as we need to. But we think that we can do this in a way that keeps us at that 10% risk level and doesn't increase it from where we are today. So you started to ask a question, Councilmember Marriott, about bonding.
Right.
So I'm going to ask, I think Kevin's up there in the clouds. Next slide. Thank you, Kevin. So this is the same slide as we showed earlier, and it really is our conclusion. But you're absolutely right. I think when we're talking about raising revenue, especially in this short period of time, bonding is really attractive, low interest rates. We can demonstrate to the bond advisors and bond council that Brian's team works with that we can actually deliver projects in a three-year timeframe, which is sort of a rule of thumb for issuing bonds. We think we're going to be successful. Brian and I have been talking about, you know, if we really push it, we can probably line up bonds in six months from the time we, you know, we press go. And we work with our bond council and work with our advisors to make that happen. So there's, that is definitely part of our thought process, and we'd like feedback on that from council because we can bring back some more details on that next month. There's another reason for it, and that is that there's a term called generational equity we've been talking about. So by spreading out those payments over the next, let's say, if it's a 25-year bond, then the folks that are benefiting from that infrastructure, all of the new houses that are going to get built, those folks are all making payments into the infrastructure that they're benefiting from.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Might need Brian on this. So, you know, when you look at the funding, I'm confused on, I know we're not going to talk about it, but I want to talk about the sheet.
You do or don't, sir?
I do. I do want to talk about it.
Okay. We're ready.
So the existing column is what? Because you have a funded and an unfunded line. So what does existing column mean?
All right, Jaclyn's teed up to speak to it.
Does that mean you're working on it now?
That's correct.
But how do you get unfunded and work on it now if it's not funded?
So some of the items that we've called out to begin working on in 2022, which is essentially what I'm calling the existing, it's either anything carried over from 2021 that's still in progress or scheduled to be initiated in 2022, is included here. And so let me talk through one example on the sewer side. I mentioned that we've added a portion that says funded by developer contributions. The Alcar lift station is listed in both the immediate need project and the funded, where we've allocated through the first IGA contributions for the design phase of the work. And then we've included in the unfunded category the construction phase estimate at this standpoint while that IGA is not negotiated. So we're still considering that, an unfunded piece of that current project.
Okay, so you're making it shelf-ready?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm going to look at the color of money. So, you know, I brought this up before, Brian, so maybe Brian can answer. So when, let's just stick with the sewer line only. Do we put money towards, like, do we have an earmark of funds out of the enterprise that are always for capital replacement or new capital build? You know, asset management strategies, and I always go back to that. Is there a set dollar amount that they get to reinvest into that?
There is. There is. That's all part of the tenure plan. And all of those funds have been programmed already in our current model. That's why the team is referencing the need to raise additional capital.
So because that's an enterprise, you're working within the money that's already allocated with the existing revenues that are going into that enterprise. And so you've already kind of forecasted that enterprise's expenditures for 10 years.
That's right.
So right now on these capital replacement, I'm going to call these capital replacement projects. Hopefully, we all are on the same language. It looks like it's about anywhere between 1.3 to less than $2 million, 1.8 million a year. So out of all the revenue, I'm assuming we take the operating expense off, and then whatever's left is what we get to reinvest in our assets.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you're talking sewer specifically, you have to remember that the challenge is Metro takes the majority of the revenue that we bring in.
And I'm assuming that would be under an operating expense.
That's right.
Right. So not only the employees, the lift stations, the electrical bills, everything associated to move things out of here, that's an operating expense.
That's correct.
But then there should be a capital replacement expense or a capital replacement. And then there's, do we do any net new or new capital builds? Or do we do the developer does all that usually when they build a new development?
So I'll phone a friend a little bit here. Majority of the new build comes from a developer, but we're starting to get to the period of time where we are needing to contribute to that as well. So historically, and Councilmember Pfeiffer, you'll remember this, we tried to match tap fees to new development to make sure that that is what expanded our system. And we've done a pretty good job of that. Could I tell you we've done a great, you know, it's 100% accurate? No. But it's, we've tried to stick to that as much as we can. We're now entering a phase where we're needing to reinvest. So what does that mean? And how do you, color of money, how do you define that, right? And that's certainly what this team is doing a ton of work on, and the finance team's trying to support them as much as we can to move that along. At what point will we need to have additional contributions that in the past we called operating, but in the future is going to be capital, if you want to use that term?
Reinvestment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there an opportunity that if we look at revenues and say we agree to increase revenues, that we have like clear allocations, just like the CIP fund, right? There's so much, like their voter said, goes to capital. Is there any opportunity for us to say, well, we always want, I'm going to make up a number, 14% of all revenues come in have to be for asset replacement in the enterprise fund? I mean, I'm assuming we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly we could revisit that. It would change how we put together those models. But yeah, absolutely.
Just so, because it seems like the reinvestment dollars go all over the place because you have existing, which could be previous years, of 6.3 million approximately. 23 has 4.3, and then it drops to 1.3, 1.5, 1.7, 1.2, 1.3. So it seems to have a weird ebb and flow. And if we're investing in our infrastructure, I think we would want a minimum, you know, allocation to ensure that the assets are maintained at a higher service level.
Agreed. Some of the spikes that you see are because they're larger projects. They take a period of time to collect the funds. And so you'll see them, that 1.3, 1.5, 1.7 you're making reference to might be collected for three or four years and then spent on a larger project.
Okay. And so the unfunded ones, obviously, are, if we had enough revenues, then they could start slipping up above the line. So if 72nd and Sheridan was, is so critical to the infrastructure, why is it on the unfunded line and not pushed up to the top?
There was both an immediate need where we were exploring a near-term fix that allowed us to complete the full design and replacement project, as Mary spoke to.
So the immediate fix is that we're going to literally bolt down the manholes, but it's more, it's more of an 18- to 24-month project to do the whole thing. And so that's the unfunded part that we need to get designed and constructed.
So I guess, you know, I was always thinking like, you know, in your personal finances, when you pay off credit card and you're done, and you take that money and you apply it to the next debt, and then you do it, is there any opportunity to do that in this whole formula?
The answer is yes, but the timing doesn't work. So you certainly can pick off some of these larger projects, and then as they go away, you use those funds to pick off the next ones. But, and this is a question I asked of the team before, all of a sudden, you have a 50-year plan instead of a 10-year plan or a 15-year plan.
So take out the loan now, quote unquote, and then just get it paid off and then pay it off over time? Versus trying to save up and then try to apply it to the next project? Otherwise, we've exceeded life.
In essence, what we've been doing for the past X number of years is that save-up and pay model. And, you know, we're now at a stage where that just doesn't make sense anymore.
Okay. I think that answers my question, so I think I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So most of my questions have already been answered. Thanks to Councilmember Marriott and Pfeiffer for their great questions. Just in terms of the insight, you're here looking for us. I know I don't speak for everyone, but personally, I have a pretty low risk tolerance when it comes to critical infrastructure and resources. One resident having a major water issue, potentially a health issue, is one resident too many. And so I really look forward to what the solutions are coming up next month in that workshop and what the recommendations are in terms of getting this 300-million-esque unfunded need met over the next decade. And I appreciate the work and your whole team, Sharon, has done so far in that. So I look forward to that. And then just, Mr. Pfeiffer really hit on a lot of my questions, so thanks. But just in terms, I don't know if it would be possible in that 50-year view to look at, once we have these 10 years taken care of, obviously, there's always going to be more needs. There just always are. But how do we start, you know, saving many of those things? Because we know 60 years down the line, we're going to have to replace that treatment facility again. Maybe we set the future generations up a little bit better than we've been set up.
Mr. Mormon?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo what my fellow council members have said so far. And I too want to have a very low risk on this, especially since my, found out on the tour, my neighborhood is the number-one priority in high-risk sewage overflow. So I am very concerned about that and want us to get moving on this as fast as we can. So I appreciate all your work. And I too look forward to our next conversation about this and how we're going to, our different options of funding and interested in the bonding and everything else that's been discussed tonight. So, yeah, that's my suggestion is let's move forward and keep going. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott, did you have something else?
I did. I just had one other question. I just had one other question, probably from Mr. Archer, just to try to be prepared for April 25th when we do, and, you know, we talked about this potential bonding to raise revenue, to do this kind of stuff. Are there ramifications for bonding within an enterprise fund, or does the city bond on its credit and then become responsible to that enterprise fund? Or how exactly does that work? It would seem to be different than.
It really depends on which fund you're talking about and the absolute size of the offering that we're going to ask. The Water Fund has issued debt repeatedly throughout our career or throughout the history of the city, and they've been able to stand on their own. The Sewer Fund is pretty small, and so the dollars that we're talking there, the city may need to back that. But ultimately, we would go just on the funds themselves originally. So we would just go for the Water Fund and try to make it stand on its own.
Right.
Sewer Fund stand on its own. The credit rating of the city will pass on to them, but they do have their own credit ratings as well.
Okay. And they're not taper ramifications to the city backing an enterprise fund? You know, enterprise funds are supposed to totally stand on their own.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if they were in default, we would have some issues at that point. And that's why we try to keep them from, the city from participating if we can.
Right, okay. Thanks. Thank you for that, something to think about as we get to that next, next conversation. I just want to say thank you for this presentation. There's an incredible amount here. I'm going to do a lot more studying on it, maybe have more questions for you next time, but thank you. This is very good.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Well, you know, Randy made me think about the city of Seattle, so I'm glad you're not proposing raising the city up a story so that the sewers, toilets don't explode. But if anyone's been to Seattle and understands the Underground Tour, I was thinking, Randy, we might just raise the streets by his house and make him live on the second story. So, good thing that was not an option.
Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us as to this discussion? This has been really useful.
Yeah, no, I, first of all, I want to thank our team.
Yeah, great job.
They worked really hard. We took some feedback from the, from the council, from the last few workshops. And so we tried to sharpen the message and sharpen what we're presenting, and they worked incredibly hard to do that, and I want to thank them for that. And I also want to thank all of you because your questions and your reaction to what was presented, I think, demonstrated your engagement, which is exactly what we need. We're talking about a large sum of money, a lot of work, and very important projects that will help us to reduce our risk and still serve the city in the best possible way. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Mormon's comments. I mean, we were right there in his neighborhood as we were talking about some of these issues. And frankly, one sanitary sewer overflow into somebody's basement is one too many if you happen to be that person. So we want to reduce that risk as much as possible. And, and the approach that we've taken over, over the last about three, four months have really tried to focus on that. And the hopscotching is definitely kind of an unorthodox approach, but it's the right approach in this situation. And as they talked about, it's an ambitious roadmap, but we can implement it. And as we continue with these next workshops, we'll be presenting you with options, and your responses will guide us in terms of how we're going to be able to move forward. So thank you very much for all of that tonight.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's been most beneficial is for the opportunity to, for us to get, you know, boots on the ground and go out and see these. And I know that you've got a second tour set up for some of the council members who couldn't get around for the first round of this. But to actually see it and to see where the issues are and where the bottlenecks are and what the possible solutions. So we gained some great information from that. For the council members who are going to be doing that here in the next couple of weeks, you're going to really be able to add on to what we learned here tonight. So it's, you know, a lot of time from our team, a lot of time from city council to fully be able to get their arms around this. Obviously, the step that we took in terms of adopting a service fee, or what did we call it? It's a-
Reinvestment fee.
Thank you. The reinvestment fee does help position us if we do decide to go the bonding route, and it puts us more in line with other communities. So I think we're headed in the right direction. This is ambitious, but it's the right way to go. So thank you all for your hard work. Mr. Devon, anything else tonight? Very good. We stand adjourned.
Worse than I've ever seen.
What's that?